Leave you by yourself over there, honest.
Yeah.
Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, October 12th. Will the court please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kluckum.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown's absent. Chairman Oller.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would ask those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, if you could turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have several presentations to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Jill Geller, Director of Johnson County Parks and Recreation District, and those who are with you, Jill, to join me at the podium. We have a special presentation, or recognition of a presentation, that's been made to our Johnson County Parks and Recreation District, and they received the Gold Award at the 2017 National Conference for Park and Recreation Organizations in New Orleans. The National Gold Medal Award is the most coveted award in park and recreation professionals honoring agencies and communities throughout the United States that exceed industry standards and establish a high standard of delivering public park and recreation services. Should note that also, Johnson County Park and Recreation truly represents the best of the best as a six-time Gold Medal finalist and a two-time grand plaque winner. So, Jill. I think we have a very short video, which let's run at this time, and then Mr. Snyder, Paul Snyder, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as Jill may have some comments to make. So, let's roll the video. That's great. That's great. Well, we've known of your excellent work for a long, long time, and especially in the last couple of years. We've been in a position to open some parkland, which we've been unable to do so for 10 or 12 years. And the design, the effort, is very, very much appreciated. We have another Coffee Creek Trail opening this Saturday, which is a part of a new trail system. So, guys, thank you very, very much. Jill or Paul, if you've got comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. On behalf of the Board, my name is Paul Snyder, was Chair last year and this year, and obviously have made great strides and progress with the district. Last year, we were a semifinalist for this award at the conference in St. Louis. This year, we brought home the Gold Medal. I don't know if this held up. It's a hefty medallion here that will be on display at the District Office, but clearly everyone had more fun in New Orleans, probably in more ways than one, but a very good experience. Myself and the other Board members just are thrilled to be associated with this organization, and the hard work is evident. We have a lot of hard work to do, and we're going to do that in addition to opening parks in the past, which can be attributed to some of the extra resources that you have provided, so we're grateful for that. But have a lot of hard work to do in the future to keep up the standards. Now, we have to live what we preach, and so appreciate everyone's support here, and we're happy to be here.
I'm Jill Geller, Executive Director. I'll just add a few comments. As you could see, it was a pretty exciting time in New Orleans. For those of you that couldn't be there in person, there was about 6,000 people in the auditorium that day, and it was a huge conference. So, Johnson County really got a lot of recognition. I'll quickly recognize the staff that are here with me today. Jeff Stewart, our Deputy Director, Joanne Courtney, our Administration and HR Manager, Rhonda Pollard, Superintendent of Recreation, Jay Henrichs, Development Director, and Richard Smalley, our Marketing and Communications Manager. And we have another 200 full-time and 1,500 part-time staff that couldn't be here and couldn't fit into this room today. So, just know that every single one of them were a part of us receiving this award. So, thank you very much for this recognition.
Well, Jill, I don't know whether you want to carry this around. We'll officially present this to you in recognition of the outstanding service and the national recognition that you bring to the Johnson County Parks and Recreation operations. Thank you very much.
Can you see over me?
Just a little bit. Squat down, Jill.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, I'd like to ask Tiffany Hinchell with Human Services, Jeff Stewart with Johnson County Parks and Recreation, and Liz Wilken from United Way Organization to join me at the podium. Well, this morning, we're kicking off Johnson County's United Way campaign. It will begin October 13, ending on November 3. And Tiffany and Jeff are going to be heading up that operation. This year's theme is "You, Me, One JC: Live Local, Give Local." And so, I'm going to ask Tiffany or Jeff, whichever, to make comments, but we've always had a tremendous support from our employees for the United Way efforts. So, anything you'd like to say, Jeff, please do so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tiffany and I certainly are pleased to be here with you today and really appreciate your continued support of the United Way. We're really excited about this year's campaign. We recognize that we're all very fortunate, but there are also many within our own community here that continue to suffer and are desperate for help. So, we're excited to work with our ambassadors that met yesterday to really inspire and engage all of our 3,800 employees to really give back to the community. And we have a couple of goals. We'd like to, we have a goal of raising $112,000 in contributions and have 375 contributors. And I'm optimistic that we can smash that goal easily, working together as one Johnson County family to really give back to the community. So, again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to sharing some positive results with you here very soon.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Liz, and I work at United Way, and I really just want to say thank you on behalf of United Way of Greater Kansas City. I echo everything Jeff said, that we really could not do this without the support of Johnson County Government, and it really adds to the campaign and what we're able to do across the whole Kansas City metro. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you all. Obviously, United Way is an important community effort, and we'll look forward to, once again, a successful effort from the Johnson County employees. And next, I'd like to ask Susan Pekerek to join me at the podium. This seems like a simple subject, and it is, but we have a proclamation recognizing a national effort for an awareness campaign called "A Day Without Water." And it's, I don't need to describe all the ways that we are dependent upon that daily effort of clean water and the benefits that are derived by all of us in this community and across the globe. Now, Johnson County does not have responsibility for delivering the product that's provided by Water One. There is a separate elected board, and I want to congratulate them for the terrific work that they do in meeting the needs of those of us in Johnson County. Johnson County wastewater, however, is an important component when we think about clean water. And throughout our country, we hear many times today about systems, delivery systems, whether it's drinking water or wastewater systems that are not functioning or do not provide the level of quality that our communities need. And part of that is because of a lack of investment, a lack of attention, and I'm proud to say that Johnson County wastewater does a great job in both of those efforts. So, Susan, I'll present this proclamation to you.
Thank you, sir.
And if you'd like to make comments and introduce those who are with you, that'll be fine.
I would love to. Thank you, sir. All right. Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, again, and thank you to the members of the Board and the County Manager's Office for your support in the reinvestment of our sanitary sewer system. Through your leadership, the Johnson County ratepayers do not have to contemplate what it means to imagine what a day is without wastewater service, and we appreciate that very much. With your support, Johnson County wastewater staff takes care of our communities every day, often going unnoticed. I have a few members of our staff with us today. I've got Raoul Romero and Guy Smith. Raoul and Guy, their staff, takes care of inspecting, cleaning, and repairing the sanitary sewer pipes that take the used water from your homes and businesses every day to the wastewater treatment plants. And from there, Tim Inbrotin and Kevin Boggs, and staff members at their treatment plants and other treatment plants then clean that wastewater so that it can be safely returned to the streams, so that someone else might use that water downstream. By doing that, that protects the public health of our community and provides for our collective economic prosperity. I encourage each and every one of you to take a moment today and think about what your day would be like if you didn't have water. You couldn't wash your hands, you couldn't make coffee, which I know is very important in my day, you couldn't take a shower. What would your day look like if the water that you used didn't, we didn't have a way to take that away from your home, from your school or your job? How would our community look if we didn't have that? So, once again, I'd like to thank the members of the Board, and I encourage each and every one of you to thank our leaders for understanding the importance of a reliable sanitary sewer system. I also encourage you to thank your local water and wastewater professional, like the professionals I have behind me today, or like any of the 200 other wastewater professionals that are back in the office and back at the treatment plants taking care of our system today, to help keep us all safe. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Susan, thank you very much. And next, I'd like to ask Jane Schwartz to join me. Jane is our Benefits Manager for Employees, and we have a proclamation recognizing National Retirement Security Week. And it's interesting to me that much of the information that's released on a national basis indicates that very few workers across this country save or are able to save for retirement purposes. And the other point that's often raised is that most of those individuals end up being totally reliant upon Social Security benefits. Those are terrific benefits that obviously need to continue, but they were never meant, in fact, to supply one's total income in retirement. And so, it's important for us as an organization to share information with our employees about opportunities that they have to provide for a more secure retirement period in their lives. And we do have voluntary additional retirement. Most of our employees participate in the CAFERS fund, but there's also additional opportunities that they can voluntarily make contributions to their retirement security. So, Jane, thank you for you and your staff in providing that information and promoting that type of service to our employees. And I'll present this proclamation to you in recognition of that effort. And if you'd like to make a comment, do you have a video?
I do.
All right.
Good morning. Jane Schwartz from the Treasury and Financial Management. So, National Retirement Security Week is being celebrated next week. It is a great opportunity to get this in front of our employees and encourage them to start saving for their retirement in addition to CAFERS, KPF, and their Social Security, because you need all of it. Voya is sponsoring a Facebook Live event on Tuesday, October 17, with a retirement code. So, anyone who goes into that event can ask live questions and learn about the steps they need to take towards their financial future and financial wellness. So, I want to show you a little video vignette. I tried to show it last week, but we're going to get it going this week. That Voya recorded for us a year ago, and we show it to our new employee orientation for our new employees, so that they can get excited about retirement.
I envision my retirement as living comfortably. I started saving early, and I've been incrementally increasing for retirement since then. I'm going to have savings for the unknown, have my house speeded up, have enough saved for my monthly bills, and I'm going to have enough to travel and explore local destinations.
I worked for the Department of Corrections for 28 years. When I first started, had no kids, wasn't married, had plenty of money in my pocket. Probably once I got to about 15, 20 years into my career, started thinking about what I wanted to do after that and how I would be able to sustain my income.
It never really became anything serious for me, because obviously I'm young and I don't have to worry about it.
I haven't thought about retirement, because I don't think any of us are really taking it serious at this time in our lives.
It wasn't more than 20 years ago I first got into retirement funds. Didn't know anything about it. And it just sat there, sat there, then you put money into it, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of money in the account. I was really surprised.
The advice that I would give is to definitely start saving immediately.
I always tell my kids, you know, hey, start early. Even if it's just $10, $20, $30, just to start it, take advantage of it.
And the more you save, the better off you will be when you get older.
I don't even understand half of this stuff. I actually signed up, just give it a day, to meet the Voyager first time. And I have a lot of this in mind, knowing that I'm going to get a lot of my questions answered.
Knowing that every paycheck money is going somewhere that I'm paying myself makes me feel real good about retirement.
I think my retirement is going to be...
My ideal retirement would be...
My retirement would be like stress-free.
Okay, so that's our story of retirement and saving, and thank you very much. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I meant to introduce my staff behind me. I've got Heather Sump and Brittany Plo Richardson. They're there every day to answer all of your questions.
Well, Jane, thank you very much, and thanks to those who continue to work every day. In my private sector business experience, in the investment business, I had the opportunity to visit and work with many, many clients as we established opportunities and programs for them to benefit in those retirement years. And as the video indicated, even if it's a small amount, being consistent in building that retirement program is the key to success. So, I would encourage all of our employees and others to take those kind of steps, which can make a big, big difference to each individual in those retirement years. Thank you. At this time, we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the Commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would welcome you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information.
Mr. Ray. Tom Rayby, 17513 West 113th Street in Oleah. Approximately 100 years ago, and maybe slightly less, there was a outbreak of influenza that went worldwide, and it was called the Spanish Flu Pandemic of 1918. But it killed almost, or somewhere between 50 and 100 million people worldwide. And there were some very remote places that this flu situation affected. It wasn't isolated anywhere truly, truly worldwide. And I was reminded of this recently. I get the American Legion magazine, because I'm a life member of The Post here in Oleah, and they've done articles about women in war, primarily nurses but others. A couple of articles, two consecutive months, about women in Vietnam in the medical business, but one article about World War II and the Bataan Death March. Quite enlightening. But in the latest edition, there was also some short interviews with nurses from North Dakota. And these interviews were done in the early 20s, but these nurses had all gone to Europe in World War I. And one of the very first ones was a story of, at that time, a young woman who boarded the ship in New York and headed for England, and she was struck with the flu almost immediately on leaving port and spent the whole crossing. In those days, some of those troop-type ships took, you know, eight or 10 days to cross the Atlantic. She was sick in the bunk for the whole trip, and the ship was quarantined in England for four days. And that piqued my interest, because my wife had a grandfather who died from this flu epidemic in 1918. And lots of families throughout the country had lost relatives. It was particularly bad in that it killed a lot of young, healthy people. The young and the, very young, the children and the elderly or the middle-aged, wasn't too many elderly in those days, survived because their anti-immune systems didn't fight as hard. And the young, healthy adults, their anti-immune systems fought so hard that it killed a lot of them. And you say, well, what the heck does that have to do with today? Well, throughout history, disease and wars have kept the populations down. And in spite of all of the disasters we have, and in spite of all of the conflicts we have, we're not killing people by the millions like we did in World War II and other wars, and like happened in the pandemic of 1918. And so, all we've got to look forward to, to cut down the population and make life better for those who survive, is maybe global warming. for those who survive, is maybe global warming. You say, oh, my God, we're trying our best to stop global warming. Well, maybe we shouldn't. I don't know. And whether or not, it's arguable as to whether or not global warming is man-made. You know, one belch from one volcano in Java can put a lot more CO2 in the world atmosphere than all of the Volkswagen vehicles and all other vehicles around the world. So it's all arguable. But there was, this flu was called the Spanish Flu primarily because Spain didn't hold back their statistics. They released them earlier than the countries who didn't want people to know that they were losing citizens due to the flu. And so that was the theory, anyway. But there was a time when it was thought that this flu actually started in Kansas. But it didn't become the Kansas Flu. And it was called the Spanish Flu. And I guess Spain was a lot more famous than Kansas at that time. But the other thing is, and I'll finish with this, Kansas is now becoming famous as a state whose executive branches semi-competent and whose legislative branch is considered almost a joke because neither of which are equal to the superior intellect of the Supreme Court, which rules all. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else.
My name is Sharon Carroll. I live at 15555 South Moonlight Road, Olathe. There was a time when no one could convince me that I would step up to a podium and voice my opinion about anything. It is not my nature. But I am so angry over the Lineage Logistics project that I would be willing to stand out on the courthouse steps with the bullhorn and shout to all about the many reasons this project is not a good fit for our country, county, I'm sorry, from the dangers of anhydrous ammonia leak or a fire, and knowing of the inability of our local fire station to handle a major leak due to the lack of equipment to fight a fire or leak because of the 85-foot height of the building. Yes, I do believe they would give us their all. But I know from all that I have learned about anhydrous ammonia that if there should be a major leak or fire, that it would require hazmat times too, and they are too far away for a timely response. Also, there is the quality of air we will have to breathe when there are 45 to 80 reefer trucks running 24/7. I want again to say it is homes and families you are subjecting the side effects of this project to. They are not just a spot on a map you are looking at. They are dreams of certain lifestyle and years of hard work getting there. You should not have the right to decrease the value of our homes and property for the benefit of the county property. You have broken every code of the PEC III zoning that the airport was said to be on when we purchased our land and have given Lineage Logistics every deviation possible from the height of the building of 85 feet to the height of the berm requirement, to the height of the lighting on the walls above the doors, to the required amount of parking spaces for their employees, even to the size of the footprint required to build this building. So I'm asking you to please listen to the people of this county and represent, you represent and rescind your vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Jensen. I live at 1257 East Butterfield Place and own property at 15665 Moonlight Road. And I'm here once again to talk about the Lineage Logistics project. This is out of their, this is out of kind of the stump sheet they gave. It really doesn't have any facts. It has a lot of platitudes. One of them is this one. Safety is of paramount importance to us at Lineage Logistics. The Oxford Dictionary says that paramount is more important than anything else or supreme. So I'm going to let you be the judge whether that's a true statement or not. All right, I'm going to go on. I can't make this thing work here. We'll try another tact. All right, we'll skip around. This is 2014. They had three leaks in just 2014 as Lineage Logistics. They used to be Millard. From 92 to 2013, 30 of these plans, 30 of their 50 plans were known as Millard. Let's see, let's go here. Let's go right to McAllen, Texas. This is last year. They were fined $58,000 in McAllen, Texas. I've shared this before, but I thought it'd be good to see it, to see it in black and First offense, serious offense. Employees piping and instrument diagrams are not accurate and did not represent equipment that was existing and was part of the process. Once again, safety is of paramount importance to us here at Lineage Logistics. Number two, serious offense. The employer did not document that equipment complies with recognized and generally accepted good engineering practices. Well, I've heard that statement a lot. We, we, here at Lineage Logistics, apply all accepted good engineering practices. So I could go on through all nine of them. Nine, they're all serious. There were a lot that weren't serious, too. This is just the serious ones that they got a maximum fine for. Nine of them. Right, I'm running out of time for this part of this. Let's go to the explosion, since they say that, they say that, they say that anhydrous ammonia doesn't, it's listed by the National Transportation Safety Board as a non-flammable gas. Well, caller is reporting, this is in Midland, this is in Mississippi. Caller is reporting explosion in the motor room of a refrigeration warehouse causing a release of an unknown amount of ammonia. Atmosphere within the motor room tested 700 parts per million of ammonia. Employees have been evacuated from the building. So as all of this rhetoric is going around about how safe anhydrous ammonia is, all we do is keep getting more and more information about the safety record. You know, these facts are really, they're really, they're inescapable. You just can't escape them. They're there. It's all over, I mean, it's all over. It's easy to find. Do a simple Google search or a Yahoo search and you'll find them. All right, I'm going to switch gears here. Don't have a lot of time left. Let's go to, this is a letter that I received notifying me of Lineage Logistics. I want you to go right down here. It says it's PEC III Planned Light Industrial Park, which, by the way, does not allow anything 85-foot tall, doesn't allow anything without screening, you've got to have a certain amount of parking. These are your rules. They're not, they're not our rules. They're the rules that we're required to obey, but you make them. You make them. Your rules. It says right here that you're going to have to have a conditional use permit for the overheight warehouse. This is, do you see what's on the letterhead? Johnson County Planning, Development, and Code is saying that you're going to have a PEC III zoning, and you're going to have to have a conditional use permit. No conditional use permits were issued for any of the deviations. You just changed the rules midstream. We're going to talk about another rule that you changed midstream. This is a hand-tampered-with version of an Ames map. It somewhat resembles an Ames map, except that part of it's missing. Here's a real one. There's a hook of land that's attached to this. It's 3.5 acres that includes the Frames and the Prezes and the Lewises and several people that were eligible to file protest petition. Your legal department, Mr. Jarrett, Mr. Lynn stood up here and said that they'd made a mistake. Yeah, I'll tell you what the mistake was. The legal description of this land, that hook is still on there. This is all one continuous piece of property. And we were denied our protest petition based on a mistake that you said that you made. You made a mistake, but you got it right now. You didn't make a mistake on the list. The list included everybody that is within that. And I got that from your own Ames department. And then I went down to the Recorder of Deeds Department, asked them if there was any mistake. They said, no, there's no mistake. This is deeded to the county, including the hook, and that's one continuous piece of property. So we were, once again, we've been denied due process all along the way. I'm over time. This needs to go on the record. You've denied us due process. It says, you've got all these rules and regulations, and they apply to the county as well as they apply to the citizens that live in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to leave a placard up here that the government requires on anhydrous ammonia while the others talk.
I think we're all familiar with that placard, so see no reason for it to continue to be on the screen. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, commissioners, thank you for letting me speak for a moment. My name is Mike Frame, the frame that Mr. Jensen actually just referenced. I kind of got caught off guard about all this because I never was notified that it was going in because I guess what he just pointed out. You know, I started to look into this late, and now I'm like, well, wait, this just isn't right, what's going on. There's a lot of exceptions going on. There's a lot of information floating. And so I did my own research and kind of looked at it. And, you know, like the comment just now, is anhydrous ammonia safe? Well, it was used in the X-15 rocket plane that set, you know, one of the early stratosphere flights because of how powerful a fuel it was. So again, I just want to say I kind of object to the building of the thing in general. And, you know, I'm a property owner, and it would have been nice to know in upfront what was going on. But as I said, I'm opposed to it. I wish you would rescind your decision on this, and I thank you very much. And I think I didn't give my property address. 27175, oh, I'm sorry, that's my dad. We're multi-generation. 27333, West 151st Street, Olathe, Kansas. My family farm-statted quite a bit of acreage out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Pam Jensen, 1257 East Butterfield Place, Olathe, Kansas. Also a property owner, 15665 Moonlight Road. I appreciate Chairman Eiler. When you invited us to come and speak, the last line that you said was you would be happy to receive our comments. So I trust that that's truly the case. Because I feel like when we come here every week, we're sharing information with you that we believe is valid and pertinent to the issue. And like Mike has said many times, everything that we share with you is easily attainable. But we would be happy to give resources at any time if you would like them. Mike and I were traveling last weekend, and we had opportunity to drive through Seward, Illinois. So those of you that have been around in these meetings, Seward, Illinois is the location of one of the anhydrous ammonia leaks that Mike has showed videos of. It was a feed and fertilizer store there in this farming community. And it's the one where it just shows the big white cloud moving across the parking lot and people literally running for their lives. Well, we drove through that community and thought, hey, let's check it out. So we did. It's no longer there. Obviously, it went out of business or relocated. It was about 10 years ago. But we, it was kind of a, it was after hours. There wasn't a lot going on in town. But we did visit with a few people, and we had the opportunity to meet a man who literally lives right across the road from the location of the site. His name is Jim. And it was just interesting to actually meet somebody and talk to them and ask them questions who has lived through what we've been talking about, that is very likely impossible to happen. And he just shared with us, oh, yeah, they literally, somebody ran to his house, said, grab your wife and whatever and go, get out, run. And so he did. He grabbed his dog, his cat, I don't know if he grabbed his wife or not, but they literally did flee from the site. And anyway, he went on just to share, he didn't really feel comfortable with putting a video of himself for us to share with you, but I have his address. I actually did take a photograph of him while he was talking to Mike. But it was just interesting for us. And it sort of reminded me of when we had the wastewater people talking about that hall. I'm not real familiar on how our whole water system works, but it's just interesting to me because that is one of the issues that we are extremely concerned about, is the waterways. And that was one of the things that came up in the conversation with Jim, is the 100,000 gallons of water that were contaminated because that's what's have to use to knock the ammonia down and that sort of thing. So, you know, just one more issue. Where does that fit in with our waterway, with Gardner Lake? You know, we've talked about that before. Just a couple of articles. I'm just going to read a few little snippets from here. This is off a website, foodqualitynews.com. This is an article from 2014, and it's just reporting on two cold storage facilities. And I'll just read. "Two separate cold storage facilities suffered from roof collapses and subsequent ammonia leaks within hours of each other. Performance Food Group's customized distribution facility in Kendallville, Indiana, and Cloverleaf Cold Storage in Napoleon, Ohio. Both reported roof collapses, ammonia leaks, and employees requiring medical attention for chemical exposure. While each of the incidents are still being investigated, both facilities are situated in parts of the United States that have seen heavy accumulated snowfall in recent weeks, which could have weighted the roofs down and led to the collapse." That particular group, Performance Food Group, they had 30 staffers, were exposed to the ammonia. Eight were sent for medical attention. The other facility, Cloverleaf Cold Storage, their roof collapsed also. In a statement on the Cloverleaf website, the company reported 11 plant workers exposed, three hospitalized, two released, one still being held for observation. This facility offers a range of repacking, cooling, freezing, and tempering services. It also offers metal and foreign, okay, I won't continue. So that's a concern that we've had, too, that I don't know if it's been talked about. Roof collapse. We do get heavy snowfall here. This is an article from the Chicago Tribune referencing ammonia leaks at Elk Grove Food Plant. "An explosion caused by an ammonia leak at a food manufacturing plant Friday morning in Elk Grove Village caused two people to be hospitalized, forced the evacuation of dozens of workers, and impacted business throughout the area. Grecian Delight Foods, the blast blew out walls and windows on the west and north sides of the plant. Hazmat technicians and fire crews worked throughout the day Friday to clear hazardous ammonia. The leak was stopped, but it was still unknown what caused the leak and the ammonia to ignite." There was a boom. Someone was quoted as saying, "I first thought it was a truck that backed into something. I came out to find an explosion had blown out the windows." Someone there in the neighborhood said his neighbor told him the explosion shook his home. Emergency response. I heard fire trucks coming. I knew it was something big. I've never seen anything like this happen." And then it goes on to just say the, all that had to take place to recover from that explosion there. Seven people injured. So the point of why we come here, to read this, is to us, this is like a very real risk. I feel like, I don't feel like we're unreasonable in sharing this information to you. And so once again, we just ask you, would you please, please spend a little time, investigate a little bit closer, and think seriously about changing your mind on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Billboard 928570, West 159th Terrace.
Bilbo 928570, West 159th Terrace. Been watching a lot on the news about the wildfires in California, and, I mean, just amazing pictures that there's just no neighborhood left. I mean, they show aerial photographs, and you've probably seen, and just stunned that nothing is left. They got burnt-out cars just sitting on the rims because everything burned up, and then I think, you know, "Why are these houses being built right there in the woods?" And I wonder, why is there so much development in the forest here? And people, "Hey, the houses are built, I'm moving in there." And yet, you know, year after year, we see the same things going on, the fires. And the thing is that they, that they developed into these forests and wooded areas, they didn't build the houses and then, and then plant all of these trees and build a forest. No, they moved the homes into there. And I feel with this plant, it's kind of the reverse. We have neighborhood here, and now you want to bring a dangerous, a big, tall plant in there. Yes, it's development, but there's other places for this development to be. It doesn't have to be there. But we got a neighborhood, and now you're planting these trees all around us. And not only that, because you can put trees there, because there's other trees in the neighborhood, and you got a big gasoline storage facility right in the middle of the forest, because everybody has gasoline in their garage to run their lawnmowers, and you're setting us up for the same thing. Yes, these, each people who's spoken was here before that, that plant was even thought of. And yes, we need development. I'm not sure we need this kind of development, low-paying jobs, but we need the development. But you got to consider what was already there, and what you guys said that was going to go in there. And why do we have zoning and codes if you can just change them at will to suit your particular pet little project that you've got here? That's not right. You don't let homeowners build as they want to. And again, I go back to the, none of you would want an 85-foot building, whether it had had anhydrous ammonia or not, in your neighborhood. You would not allow that. I know where you guys all live. It's easy to look up. You guys wouldn't, wouldn't allow that. You wouldn't make those changes, but as long as it's somebody else down in the southwest part of the county, and we already own the land, so, hey, let's use it. That's not looking out for your people. That's not giving consideration of people. And I would even expect a little more consideration of a couple of you that never, never pay attention to our comments and even look over here, or during the recognition services, some of you just got other things to do. I know you guys are busy men, and this is, you don't like this, this time, I understand that. I do appreciate and thank you for having public comments. Not every city around us has public comments. It's been taken away. And this is not a pleasant time for you. But it's not a pleasant time because you made some decision, I feel, without a lot of, without a lot of forethought about your research about all of these things, and without little consideration of people that live a long way away from you.
Thank you.[845.19][845.19](APPLAUSE).
Good morning, Board. My name is, excuse me, I need that water that they were talking about rationing. My name is Tony Petron. I live in Lenexa, Kansas, 8125 Lingle Lane. I just wanted to read briefly the statement under Kansas statute, "The Board of County Commissioners is required to protect our health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare, and protect the environment, and conserve and promote property values." I don't know if you all pledged to uphold that, but that is a Kansas statute that you all are required to work under. Just wanted to state and remind you and all of us that. Could I ask, how many of us here are from Johnson County? Is there a show of hands? How many of us are here from Lenage Logistics? Is there a show of hands? From, from Lenage Logistics. I also wanted to remind us just that, as a government, and I appreciate this public time, and, you know, our great nation is, is a nation of, of the people, for the people, and by the people. And I think it's important that we remind ourselves of that, and wanted to take that time to do that. And so we should relax, you know, if that's what we're here for, that we can converse. I know this discussion's been going on many years for the Jensen's, and they're good friends of mine, and they want to be heard. I think there's some great information that has been shared. For us, as a great nation, to go forward, we, we need to listen to each other, we need to humble ourselves, we need to set aside agendas, and be able to come to the table and talk. And it's my hope that you all would rescind this vote to me, from a Lenexa resident, seeing this site and the people around it. I wouldn't want it in my backyard either, and I don't think any of you would as well. Earlier, when you were sharing with Susan from the Water Board, Susan stated, "Public health is, is the main objective of our community, as well as the residents." And you as a board were commending them for that public health, and that's a good thing. We have a lot of public, 1,800, 1,850 residents, homes fall within one and a half miles of the evacuation zone of the proposed cold storage facility. There's been 16,777 people injured from anhydrous ammonia in the last five years, 20 people killed. We need to look at the safety of the residents in this area, and not that we're against cold storage, is there a better place for this? So please, just reconsider your position, and, and again, rescind your vote. How much time I have left? And just one other comment. Ed, you were commenting Jane earlier with the Retirement Security Week, and the importance of the B.O.C.C. to protect the investment and the future of its citizens, and primarily its workers. But in this case, we're hurting the retirement of many people who have looked for these properties south of this development, west of this development, as a retirement place, at a place to invest their money, and this is a project that's affecting and detrimental to their retirement. So I think there's many people here that would represent that statement, so please And then in that film that we saw that Jane was showing, Stress Free, you know, here are many citizens that live within the range of this proposed plant that are under a lot of stress from the decision that you all have, are proceeding with. And again, we just ask you to consider that and rescind your vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.[1160.48][1160.48](APPLAUSE).
Well, my name is Carol Myers, and I live at 1608 South Lakestone Court, in the Lakestone Development there at 151st and 056th Highway. One of our concerns would be the many, many, many semi-trucks that will be traversing 151st on a daily basis. I know that my husband recently went to a meet and greet with Mike Ashcroft, and he shared with me one of his comments, that anhydrous ammonia is all around us, that it's in various places across Johnson County. But we know that anhydrous ammonia is a bad thing. So really, do we need more of a bad thing? I, I don't think so. We live next door to my daughter, her husband, and our two children. She has a teenage son who will be driving soon. That's already a pretty dangerous intersection. I can't imagine adding all of that traffic there. If this goes through and there is an accident, I would say to you that you council members have blood on your hands. And my question to you would be, are you okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you.[1277.48][1277.48](APPLAUSE).
Good morning. My name is Michelle Seagrist, 1613, South Lakestone Drive, Olathe. And standing behind a podium is not really a place that I feel comfortable, but it's a place I feel like I need to be this morning. It's been really a privilege to sit here. I really enjoyed the beginning of the meeting this morning, listening to the great county, Johnson County, Kansas, the things that we have been working towards to make our county better, the awards, obviously, for the people that have been working to make it better. And I recently became aware of this project, the anhydrous ammonia plant. I've been a resident of Johnson County for 17 years, but in the last 14 months have moved here to Olathe. Very excited to find a place with the country feel and yet close to the city. I have a family, three kids, and I would just pose the challenge and the question to you, as we have worked so hard, I know you've heard all the statistics on the plant, all of the worries and the concerns, but I'm posing to you the question, if we have worked so hard to make this a great county in Kansas, why would you even consider bringing something like this into our great county? And I'm asking you to please reconsider.
Thank you.[1360.01][1360.01](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else? If there's, yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Latham. I live at 25910 West 149th Street, that is in Prairie Highlands. We are in the evacuation zone for this. I applaud this county and its Board of Commissioners for all the economic development you've brought to us over time. You do a good job of that, and I know you view this project as that in itself and want to hang on to it, but it, because of everything that you've heard today, the risks do not match what that plant is bringing to us. We all live with risk all the time. It's part of growth, part of economic development. We have to accept change. But we don't need, we also, excuse me, spend a lot of time not going beyond what is thoughtful, responsible risk. We wear seat belts in our cars. We put our kids in safety seats. We keep our streets safe. We manage traffic flow. This plant does not manage the risk for the detention center, for our roads, for rail traffic, for things that are going on for the looks of our neighborhood and our property values. And this track record of Lenage Logistics is abysmal. The other people that use anhydrous ammonia in this county have far better track records. I would urge you to rescind your vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.[1473.36][1473.36](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else? If there's no one else to be heard, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. Thank you all very much. Next notes for the record, I do have a couple of notes for the record. I will be signing a partial release of easement for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines in the vicinity of 143rd Street and US 69 Highway in the city of Overland Park. I will also be signing two partial releases of easements for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer line in the vicinity of 133rd and Goddard Avenue in the city of Overland Park. I would also note, on our agenda today, I believe it's listed as item number five. If there's anyone here for that item, it's a residential lot at Hedge Lane and 183rd Street. It is my understanding that the applicant has requested that item be withdrawn. Do we have verification of that? Jay?
Good morning. Chair, members of the Commission, Jay Leipzig, planning development codes. Yes, that item has been withdrawn. Staff did meet with the applicant earlier this week, and we looked at some other options that might be available to them that would produce a better development plan. So he has requested that item be withdrawn.
All right, so the understanding is that that will go through the zoning board process again?
Yes.
As a, as a new item?
That's correct.
Okay. So noted. Thank you very much. Moving to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider reappointing John DeGrand as the Sixth District Gardener Township Representative to the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board through March 13, 2019. Item number two, consider appointing Brandon Kinnick as the Fourth District Representative to the Transportation Council through September 1, 2020. And item number three, consider authorizing the purchase of 4,824 subscription licenses of checkpoint endpoint complete security software from Softwarehouse International to protect all servers, workstations, laptops, and tablets connected to the county network in an amount not to exceed $149,980.
Okay, thank you. Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item removed and considered separately? Mr. Ashcroft?
Number three, please.
All right, so noted. Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? All right, there'd be no one to be heard, so back to the commission. Mr. Osterhaus, you have a motion?
I'll leave that we approve. Consent agenda items one and two as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve items one or two as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcroft.
Yes.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number three, Mr. Ashcroft, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had a question with Mr. Altridge yesterday, and I appreciate him educating me a little bit. I was looking at this briefing sheet and noticed that we had a little over 4,800 subscriptions requested, and the question I had was, well, we don't have 4,800 employees, we have about 4,000 employees, give or take a few. So I was trying to figure out what the gap was, and he explained to me that we have service agreements, I think that's the right term, with various local governments, smaller local governments, who use our system, and this will provide security for them, and it makes sense. If you look at the total cost, the number, it works out to be about $31 per package. And that seems very reasonable, particularly given the circumstances that they're facing. But it raised a question, and this was really a question I wanted to direct to the county manager. We've been encouraging the county manager to reach out to local governments, looking for partnering opportunities and opportunities in which to better use our resources, and I know Hahnus and his team have done a lot, Core Four and others. But I was wondering, on circumstances like this, is, is this something that we consider when we go through the evaluation process, or maybe I should say, the construction process of the RFP, to provide the opportunity, reach out for other governmental agencies, and, I mean, maybe non-government, I don't know how that works? And I was just wondering... But I was wondering, on circumstances like this, is this something that we consider when we go through the evaluation process, or maybe I should say the construction process of the RFP, to provide the opportunity, reach out for other governmental agencies and, I mean, maybe non-government, I don't know how that works? And I was just wondering if we do that, both as, from a leadership perspective and from the perspective of greater buying power. I know under this circumstance, we use a blanket purchase order, and it's very good, but to actually leverage our opportunities. So that's a general question to the manager. I don't object to this, but I would encourage that as we go forward for other opportunities, not just this.
Yeah, I think that we did not do it in this case. We have in other cases, probably the most recent example is with a niche program we did with law enforcement throughout the county. I think this, we're fairly large systems, so we have not provided that opportunity. In my experience, sometimes if we can go ahead and get a certain system in place, we then allow others to kind of come on, and that becomes a little more efficient for us. So we didn't do it in this case. We do it in another case, but not in this one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the motion as read.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the authorization as noted. Any further questions or discussion? Is there anyone who would like to speak to the commission on this item? All right, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Chairman Illett.
Aye, motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, first item is business session minutes for 2017, September 21st.
Move for approval.
Mr. Allen was absent, so we do have a motion to approve. Are there any corrections or additions? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Chairman Illett.
Aye, motion carried. Next item has been withdrawn, item number five. Are there any other items for consideration?
No, sir.
All right. Moving to reports and communications, Mr. Zacharias.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, only one item today released information to you about an IRB that's planned to be issued by the city of Gardner. They're going to be holding a public hearing next Monday at 7:00 to issue about $38 million in IRBs with about a 70% tax abatement. You have a copy of the cost benefit analysis in your packets as well. The other item, I guess I'll make a footnote, commissioners, going on what Commissioner Ashcraft was talking about, I will bring the issue up with regards to sharing this issue about the emails with the other city managers coming up in the next few weeks and see if they want to buy. Exactly right. So I just wanted to make that footnote as well.
Cool.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
I just want to follow on. Mr. Zacharias, I've asked a similar question this before, but looking at the Wichita State University cost benefit analysis, you know, very thorough, very logical, while I may have some objections to some of the assumptions, I appreciate that. But the question I was wondering, does Wichita State also do, or have they ever done what I would call post audits or analysis of previous efforts that they've done these projections on to validate, to verify that they've turned out the way they should? And if you don't know, I would just encourage us to find out, because this is an issue that continues to be debated, and some people have sensitivities to it. I am one, but I would like to know factually if we have that, if it works out the way that it's supposed to.
Well, I know that, we asked Chris, if anybody else to kind of follow up some of that stuff earlier. I think some cities do that, some, at least some follow up on making sure that the requirements of employment requirements indeed have been adhered to. If you're talking about the economic benefits from that point, from these projects, I'm not aware of it. And we can have Chris maybe ask more questions pointedly and get back to you.
But I was wondering if Wichita State has a role, has ever assumed that role.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I think that that's been talked about. I've not seen any studies that way, but let's inquire more fully.
I mean, I haven't seen anything.
I haven't either.
Thank you.
All right. I do have one item before we move to commission comments. The KAC annual meeting is scheduled to be held in Overland Park on November 14, 15, and 16. The business meeting at which time official business is conducted will begin, I'm told, at 7:30 a.m.
A.m.
A.m., Wednesday morning, November 15. So we do need to select a voting delegate and two alternates for that business session. I would simply note this, Mr. John Bartalock, who's Director of Records and Taxation, is the vice chair of the KAC Board, and
Wonderful opportunity.
I think it's a good opportunity for John to be there at 7:30 a.m.
You need a motion, Ms. Chairman?
Now, we do need alternates.
How about, can I recommend Commissioner Brown?
Oh. Oh, oh, oh.
Do you need that in a form of a motion?
Is that?
I'll move that John be primary with Commissioner Brown secondary.
All right, then we do need another alternate in case Mr. Brown doesn't show up.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen, so he raised his hand.
Mr. Allen is more than welcome.
All right, so the motion, as I understand it, is Mr. Bartalock will be our voting delegate with Mr. Brown and Mr. Allen as alternate voting delegates in case they are needed. Any further questions? Excuse me?
I'll second that motion.
All right, the motion's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I vote on behalf of Commissioner Brown, too?
I don't think that'll be necessary for conversation.
Just in case there was a tie.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Chairman Illett.
Aye, motion carried. Congratulations to those who have been nominated. I think also at this, well, let's turn to commission comments. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy week for myself and a number of us as well, because a number of these events, most of us have had a chance to attend. Last Thursday afternoon, we all, a number of us participated and attended the Johns County Museum's 50th Anniversary at the Johns County Arts and Heritage Center. I know Chair Illett will comment on that a little later on, I hope. That Tuesday morning, last Tuesday morning, Shawnee Mission School District Education Foundation breakfast was held, and I had a chance to contribute to a future of our schools. Thank you all, others who attended and participated in that event. Last Tuesday afternoon, in spite of the rain, Kinetic and the Minnamerica Regional Council sponsored an event called Focus Conversation: Public Policy and Automated Vehicles. It was a forum to discuss how local governments can prepare for these new technologies, autonomous vehicles, and work together across jurisdictions to ensure regulation and legislation that enables us to take advantage of these coming opportunities that this technology will provide. It's a good event. I know a fellow by the name of Rob Puentas from Kinetic spoke to us, and I know he made more comments about it that next morning at the, when he presented his program to the Kansas City Council. And yesterday afternoon, Wednesday, I had a chance to go to the Shawnee Mission, Shawnee Chamber of Commerce to visit with the new president CEO, Ann Smith Tate. We welcomed her aboard, so that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Clicka.
Chairman, I just want to restate what was alluded to earlier, is that the Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a ribbon cutting on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. And this is for the Coffee Creek Streamway Trail Program that's underway. This is a 3.4-mile trail that's going to be running from Heritage Park East to 169th and Switzer Road. Ribbon cutting will be taking place between shelters nine and 10 in Heritage Park. That's 9:00 on Saturday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, for the last few weeks, if not longer, we've had some discussion about the arts fund, and we had a meeting, a study session, last week discussing that and maybe making some modifications. And I look forward to those modifications being brought forth for further discussion. But one of the issues that I raised regarding the arts fund and the use of that resource is, are there other opportunities in which to preserve the heritage of Johnson County and particularly the area that's being affected? And not just doing that by adding new art, but maybe saving some of the existing homes. And one in particular I mentioned was the Green Home, which is a Queen Anne-style home that is almost 130 years old. And I know there have been some changes to the inside from the previous owner, making some, I'll use the term withdrawals, of some of the historical components of it. But the house itself, the structure itself, still stands and is in good shape. The city of Olathe has worked on it some to try to save it. The Olathe Historical Society has worked on it some, and I know Mr. Waters and his staff have had an interest in that. I was wanting to make a motion, though, to direct staff to investigate creative options to, and I'll use the term, save the greenhouse by working with the city of Olathe, the Historical Society, and any other interested parties, and to do that immediately, because once that house is torn down, Mr. Chairman, it will be gone forever. And so much of Olathe has, well, I'll use the term, suffered from that. I just hesitate personally to contribute to that without making one last effort to do that, and I don't have a particular solution in mind. Several things have been suggested. I think Mr. Clicka had mentioned working with the Parks historical component. That's great. Mr. Allen has had some ideas, but I would encourage us to do that and try to find a solution. And if that means using some of the monies that were originally set aside or potentially programmed for the arts program, I would be fine with that.
Well, let me suggest this. If you've not had a conversation directly with the mayor and other officials from the city of Olathe, I would request that you do that before bringing any kind of form of action. I have had those conversations, and the property is not on, the structure is not on the property, as I understand it, that the county has acquired for the parking area. This is in the hands of the city of Olathe. So I would encourage you to have that conversation. And again, as I said, I've already had that conversation, and I think a motion of that kind would be premature.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have had those conversations, and you are right, that property is under the domain of the city. But the action is being perpetuated by our request, our expectations to build a new courthouse, and I think we have a stake in that, and I think we can influence a positive outcome regarding that property. And that technicality of who owns the land is one issue, but the heritage and how we impact it, I think, is a broader issue and a deeper issue for me.
Well, my point is, I think that we need to assess the interest of the city of Olathe, quite frankly.
And I would agree with that, yes.
I do not get a sense from my conversation that there's a high level of interest. So I would suggest that we can have that conversation more directly with the city of Olathe and make a determination following that. I think their input is important.
Well, the motion stands, Mr. Chairman. If there is a second, I would be interested.
Well, the motion, the motion does not stand at this point. I am ruling it out of order, simply from the standpoint that we need specific direction and information from the city of Olathe. And so therefore, if you want to make it, and there is a second, that's fine. Mr. Osterhaus.
Well, I just like some clarification. What you're asking for, Commissioner Ashcraft, is just to direct staff to
To investigate.
We're not taking any action.
Correct. Creative options in terms of trying to save that house and assisting the city, the Historical Society, and any other entity. So I'm not sure that the chairman and I fundamentally disagree, but I'm asking for us to recognize it and to move forward in a positive vein.
Well, if the intent of the motion is to direct staff to have a conversation with the city of Olathe, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But beyond making a commitment, any further action, I would
I'm not asking to spend any money at this point, but
I'll go ahead and make a second on that to have those conversations.
Motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Allen.
After the meeting last week, when Commissioner Ashcraft brought this up, I did drive by and inspected the house from the outside. It does have, in my opinion, quite a bit of historical significance, just from the appearance of the street, and I understand the inside may have had some items removed. And I thought actually Commissioner Ashcroft made a good point last week when we're talking about art. And we also have the tree over there, and one of the things, if we go through and investigate, I'd like to see the feasibility of possibly moving that house and maybe setting it behind that tree in the parking lot. And I don't know how feasible that is, but I think it does make a statement that we are trying to preserve the tree and preserve at least one of those houses, and then how to use that house or whatever would need to be discussed. I think part of it is, if, as a board, we show the city of Olathe, we're at least interested in looking at that, maybe they would be receptive to us doing that. But I think that would probably be a little bit unusual to have in the middle of a parking lot, this tree in an older house that was preserved. So I'd at least like to look at the possibilities. How feasible that is, frankly, I don't know, but I'd sure like to look at it.
All right, as I understand it, the motion is to direct staff to have a conversation with the city of Olathe and bring back to us the results thereof. Any further discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Just a clarification. I would not necessarily limit it to the city of Olathe, but I think that's a primary partner. I think there are others that have an interest, a stake in it, Historical Society. I don't want to make it unruly, but I don't want to limit the county staff's conversations necessarily.
Well, but it's the city of Olathe who has the responsibility in regards to the structure and the land that it sits on, so their input would be extremely important.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
No.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
And Chairman Illett.
Aye, motion carried. Mr. Allen, anything else, Mr. Ashcraft?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I hate to remind you of protocol, but we do have someone at the far end of the DS that's having a very special day today, and I just wanted to make sure we recognize that person.
The other far end.
Yes, the other far end. It's Maury's birthday. Congratulations, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
No comments.
Mr. Osterhaus?
Yeah, just a few. Had some opportunities this week to go and speak. I spoke with the Empire State's Homeowners Association. Great crowd, 50 people, which was really amazing, considering that was when that rain and the freezing, or not freezing, but cold weather was coming through. Lots of great questions about the county. Brandon Hearn from the Health and Environment Department and I should start a traveling road show, because he does these, what's recyclable, what's not recyclable, and we end up at these homeowners associations all the time at the same time. So look for that, Jason and Brandon Traveling Road Show. Also, with all of our talk about art, I had a chance to sit down with Nicole Emanuel, who runs the Inner Urban Art House. Thank you. And we just had a great discussion for about an hour about ways to get more artists involved in the process and some things that she'd like to see changed. She also brought in Randy Cohen. He's the Vice President of Research and Policy with Americans with the Arts, and he was there to talk about the positive economic impacts that the arts have in their respective communities. So a great conversation with her. And then last night, had the honor, Representative Brett Parker invited me to his town hall last night to talk with citizens and hear his thoughts on where the state is going and talk to some people about some county issues. So appreciate that invite. And then, of course, I too would like to wish Maury Thompson, our own Maury Thompson, a happy 40th birthday.
All right, thank you very much. Well, I think it's already been mentioned, the Coffee Creek ribbon cutting Saturday morning at 9:30 a.m. I would also note that the Johns County Library Foundation event is Saturday evening this week also. So we do have a motion for an executive session. Mr. Allen? We are at, almost 11 a.m. We do have agenda review. Linda, what do you think, time-wise?
20 minutes.
We need 20 minutes for the executive session. Let's begin that at, let's try it at 11:20.
I would move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 11:20 a.m. for at approximately 11:20 AM for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of receiving advice of counsel and to preserve the attorney-client privileges for communications related to a potential claim and real property interest, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:40 AM, or as thereafter, as the executive session may end.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Chairman Illet.
Aye. Motion carried. That concludes our regular agenda, business agenda. We continue in recess until following the executive session. We will take a short break and come back for agenda review. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.